Check one two, check one two, check one two. Check one two, check one two, check one two, one two, check one two. Check one two, one two, check one two.
Yep, that looks good.
Who check one two? One two, one two, check one two. 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 Check one two, one two.
English? English. Awesome.
I guess we just have to figure out how far we can be from it. We need it a little higher.
Alex, do you want to be in the middle?
Yeah.
I'm also a pipsqueak, so what height do we need it?
That's fine.
That big?
It's like just hit your mouth. Yeah.
Okay, cool.
But don't make sure that it doesn't cover your beautiful face. Your pretty, pretty face.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah. You can try and do it once over if you guys want.
(bell)
Hey. Oh Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons come in. Qu'as ton bras s'est porté l'épée ? Il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épaule paye des plus brillos exblots. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you.
And the first to match too, we have to go over.
So, so nice.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I can ask members of council to take their seats, we'll start... Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bonjour mesdames et messieurs. Et bienvenue à la conseil municipal.
Welcome to city council for the meeting of September 24th.
Of the 24th of September 2014. I'd like to, before we begin, a prayer. I'd like to point out in the gallery, we're very pleased to have the Honorable Ted McMeacon, who is the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and the Honorable Yasir Nakvi, who is the Minister of Community Safety and Corrections and the Government House Leader, and of course, MPP for Ottawa Centre. And Minister McMeacon was here because the Ontario Home Builders Association is meeting in Ottawa, and he was their guest speaker. And I had the honour of serving with the minister and, of course, Minister Nakvi. And I passed along in our meeting today, our council's appreciation for the continued support of the upload dollars, which have benefited our city greatly. And to thank you for the continuation of keeping to the schedule. And it's a great honour to have both Ted and Yasir here. Ted is a former mayor of Flamborough, so he understands the municipal world very well. And a very warm welcome to both of you. Thank you for joining us. For those who are able to, please rise for prayer. Almighty God, let us work together to serve all our people. We could ask that you take your seats for a moment. Colleagues, it's with great sadness that we learned of the passing of Mr. John G. Malac on September 19th, 2014. Artist, engineer, long-time Bell Northern Research worker, elected official and community volunteer, John has made his mark in so many fields. His contributions to his community and our city over the years are too numerous to count. Monsieur Malac a tellement fait...
Monsieur Malac did so much for his community.
...reeves of March Township and is a commissioner of the National Capital Commission. He also helped to establish the city of Ottawa's visual identity and much more. John's vision and leadership was always valued and respected. Le leadership et la vision à John...
His leadership and his visions deserved the respect of all residents of Ottawa.
John is much admired. I was honoured to have been able to present John with the Lucille Broadbent Award for Artistic Achievement in 2010. His paintings are beautiful, and his work with the Canada Civic Art Gallery was instrumental in developing the careers of local working artists. We have one of his beautiful paintings on display here today, titled Graham Farm, which is just at the entrance of the council chamber. Mr. Malac's loss will be keenly felt by his family, by his friends and neighbours, and by the entire community of Ottawa. John's wife and two of his children are with us today, and you have our deepest sympathy and condolences, Beth.
Thank you for all that you did for your community, John.
...to say a few words about her long-time friend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm joined today by Beth Malac, who was John's wife for 53 years, and his son Bill and his daughter Kirsten, and I underpand that she wanted his home vacuuming. John and Beth were among the first 10 families to move to Tiffany Crescent in the new Beaverbrook community in 1965, and they've remained in their homes since that date. John believed passionately in Bill Terran's vision of Canada, to create a garden city, complete with homes, employment areas, a town centre and extensive natural areas. That same year in 1965, he became a councillor for March Township, and in 1967 was elected reeve, a position he held until 1976, when I took over. Later, he spent three years on the NCC Board of Directors. John was a mentor and friend to me, supporting me from time to time, when I was first elected councillor in 1969 to the present. In those early days, the only staff in the office was four administrative staffs, so John made long lists of municipal issues and gave one to each councillor. I was given planning. We worked together as a team. Mr. Mayor, our budget meetings were around John's dining room table, and we put together a budget in one evening and then shared a bottle of pear liquor from John's home country of Croatia. That's a good way to do a budget. John continued to support the community after retiring from office, providing advice and support to many. Several times this year, he's presented to the planning committee, the last time in June, we spoke passionately about the proposed building and how they needed to be secondary to nature. And he also was at the opening of our new library, where he was also instrumental in getting started in the early days. He continued to support the vision of a complete satellite city that remains as underlying foundation for Canada and particularly for Beaverbrook. After retiring from Bell Northern, John was able to concentrate on his painting, producing wonderful colourful landscapes among other artworks. We've lost a wonderful artist, a great family man, a passionate supporter of his community, and a great supportive friend. This community will celebrate his life this Saturday evening at 6 o'clock at the Malac Centre, which is going to be the... That building will be the lasting memorial to his vision and to his leadership. So, thank you, John.
Thank you, councillor. Would you please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Please remain standing for the singing of our national anthem. I'd ask councillor Clarke to introduce our special guests.
Special guests are The Peptites. The Peptites are a nine-member musical group, of whom three are here, The Singers. They have performed at Blues Fest, Jazz Fest, Capitol Pride, West Fest, NAC Canada Day, and most recently Folk Fest and The Black Sheep Inn. They have collaborated with Stuart McLean on a full-length album to accompany his most recent book, and were then featured live on-air broadcast nationally on CBC for the 20th anniversary show of Vinyl Cafe. They were awarded Album of the Year by Peter Simps of The Ottawa Citizen in 2010, voted the best live show in Ottawa Express Readers' Poll in 2011, named Best Band in Metro Ottawa News in 2012. They have donated their time and effort and talent to such notable charities as Make-A-Wish Foundation, Jer's Vision and Ringside for Youth. Today, The Peptites would like to feature the three ladies of their troupe, R&amp;B vocalist Dee Dee Butters, pop vocalist Alexander Pichniky, and jazz vocalist Rebecca Noel, singing the national anthem. the national anthem.[537.85][537.85](Music)
Well, thank you very much to The Peptides, and thank you councillor Clark for recommending them to sing our national anthem. At this time, I'd like to invite Captain Tim McKee to the podium for this meeting's City Builder Award presentation, as well as councillor Bob Manette, Tim's councillor. Welcome. Very much good to have you here, Tim, and I know members of your family are here and fan club from the Orleans Chamber. Captain McKee has been a tremendously active member of the Orleans community, as well as Ottawa at large, volunteering his time and efforts to improve the quality of life and provide opportunity for all residents of our city, particularly young people. Le captain McKee est un membre.
Captain McKee has been a tremendously active member of Orleans community, as well as Ottawa at large, volunteering his time and efforts to improve the quality of life.[694.01][694.01](Laughter).
Captain McKee is always hard at work giving back to his community. For his many contributions and leadership, Captain McKee has been acknowledged with several awards, including being presented with the Queen's Diamond Jubilee Medal last year. And it's my pleasure to recognise some of your many contributions to our community today. Captain McKee has been volunteering his time with the 3018 Royal Canadian Army Cadet Corps for over a decade. Thanks to his leadership, the 3018 Corps recently received its highest possible commendation for the third year in a row, the Lord Strathcona Medal. Grâce à son leadership, le corps de cadets de l'armée.
Thanks to his leadership, the 3018 Corps recently received its highest possible commendation for the third year in a row, the Lord Strathcona Medal.
Award is presented to cadet corps's, cadet corps rather, to acknowledge exemplary instances of leadership, physical ability, and fostering patriotism through knowledge of military history and matters. Cette médaille est remise en.
This award is presented to cadet corps to acknowledge exemplary instances of leadership, physical ability and fostering patriotism.
McKee helps organise and run many events in Orleans. His cadets can often be seen setting up and staffing events like the annual Canada Day Seniors Bingo, held at the Cumberland Seniors Park. The 3018 Corps has also found time this year to help with the recently opened Orleans Community Garden and the annual clean-up of the 150th anniversary of Orleans mural on St. Joseph Boulevard. Captain McKee is committed to ensuring that each member of his cadet corps has the opportunity to become leaders and contributors to their community and beyond. Le captain McKee est engagé.
Captain McKee is committed to ensuring each member of his cadet corps has the opportunity to become leaders and contributors to their community and beyond.
You and the corps, another successful season, Tim, which begins this week, and for the accomplishments and so many more, we'd like to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. I know your councillor, Bob Manette, is extremely proud of the work and leadership that you show in Orleans, and we're honoured to have you and members of your family with us today. Congratulations.[839.12][839.12](Applause).
Your worship, Mr. Mayor, councillor Manette, thank you very much, and I just want to say, we always talk about the fact that it takes a community to build a child. The strength in our community lies in the strength of the youth. And we have over 12 cadet units, sea army and air throughout the city of Ottawa, and there's over 100,000 12- to 18-year-olds in the city, yet there's fewer than 1,000 of those youth involved in the cadet programme. So, I'd like to turn this into an ask of council, that the councillors reach out in their community and help those youth in their community find a cadet programme, so that they can help and have the opportunities that the cadets in Orleans have had. Thank you everybody very much, we really appreciate it.[912.81][912.81](Applause).
Thank you very much, Tim, and merci beaucoup, Bob. Our next presentation recognises the Commissioners of Ottawa and the exceptional services they provide here in our community. I'd like to ask Colonel Mac Campbell, Chairman of the Board of Directors, to come forward, Lieutenant Colonel Bob Egan, Chief Financial Officer, and Commander Andre Gagnier, Director of Shared Services. Two of the three are with us today, and certainly your president Paul, I know is out of town. It's a pleasure to have you with us today. That's right. This past June, I had both the pleasure and honour of helping the Commissioners of Ottawa celebrate their 75th anniversary and an event held by their organisation. Commissioners of Ottawa is one of the leading security service providers in the National Capital Region. Commissaire d'Autawa est l'une des chefs.
Commissioners of Ottawa is one of the leading security service providers in the National Capital Region.
Over the years, it has become one of the largest private employers in the region, with more than 3,600 dedicated men and women applying their expertise. That's a far cry from the Commissioners of Ottawa's modest beginnings in 1939, where it employed just 15 employees. With their years of experience, these talented men and women are now contracted to nearly 500 sites in the Ottawa Gatineau area, including many government buildings. Security is something that can never be taken lightly.
Security is something that can never be taken lightly.
Concern and priority in our society. Commissioners of Ottawa, many of whom the members are retired, RCMP and members of the armed forces, have stepped up to the call and need in our community. On behalf of City Council and my colleagues around the council table, we thank you and your colleagues for 75 years of dedicated service to the men and women of Ottawa. I originally presented this proclamation at the anniversary event, however, since the organisation's anniversary falls on October 1st, I have the pleasure of reading it again today, and I think I have it right here. I don't think we give you a second plaque, we're cutting back, you see, on the plaque budget. Whereas since, no-one believes that. Since October 1st, 1939, Commissioners of Ottawa has grown to become one of the largest private sector employers in the National Capital Region, with more than 3,600 employees today and 23,500 employees hired over the past 75 years. Entendu que depuis la seconde guerre mondiale.
Whereas since the First World War and in time of peace, Commissioners of Ottawa created employment for past members of armed forces and RCMP of all ages.
New security services to meet client demand, help protect our freedom and peaceful way of life, and raise awareness and funds for military families throughout volunteer causes. Therefore, I, Jim Watson, Mayor of the city of Ottawa, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2014, Commissioners Day in the city of Ottawa. Congratulations.[1105.15][1105.15](Applause).
Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Consulier Manette.
Président.
Councillor Lewis.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
Ici.
Councillor Clark.
Here.
Councillor Holmes.
Here.
Councillor Hobbs.
Here.
Councillor McCray.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Councillor Hume.
For short time.
Councillor Blay.
Here.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Consulier Derrache.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Ici.
Le cadamètre à 10, monsieur le maire.
Merci. Confirmation amendments, adoption de process.
Of the meeting of September 10th, 2014, carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Déclaration de conflit d'intérêt y compris ce découlant de réunion antérieure. None. Communications as received, regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important présentation de rapport, conseil Fleury et de Rush, s'il vous plaît.
That Community and Protective Service Committee Report 34 and Planning Committee Report 76 to be received and considered.
Carried. First item is postponement and deferral of City Council meeting September 10th, the Conseil municipal le 10 septembre. Official plan and zoning bylaw amendment 3001 Palladium Drive, 405 and 425 Huntmar Drive. Modification de plan officiel et modification au règlement de zonage 3001, promenade Palladium. Quatre sans cinq, quatre sans vingt cinq, promenade Huntmar. Councillor Alshantiri has a motion to defer.
Thank you, thank you, your worship. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Cadri, that the item official plan and zoning bylaw amendment, 3001 Palladium Drive, 405 and 425 Huntmar Drive, be deferred until next council meeting of October 8, 2014. Mr. Mayor, just to give us a chance to work together with both party and hopefully we'll come up with a solution at the next council meeting. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak on deferral? I, councillor Cadri, is seconding that. I believe councillor Wilkinson, you're in agreement.
Yes, I'm in agreement, yeah.
Partly in your ward. On the deferral. Carried, adopté, merci. The next item, committee reports, planning committee report number 76, zoning bylaw amendment 100 Varley Lane. Modification au règlement de zonage sans huel Varley. Carried. Bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agendas presented in the order paper? On the bulk consent agendas presented. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. The council receive a list of the items approved by its committees under delegated authority attached as document one. Carried. Motion to adopt reports. Motion important adoption de rapport, conseil Fleury et de Rush, s'il vous plaît.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed. Carried.
Motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. We have a motion from councillor Egli, seconded by councillor Clark, with respect to adult crossing guards on suspension. Carried. Councillor Egli, if you'd like to move this, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't usually go through all the whereas's, but I think in this particular time, it's important to do so. So, whereas staff undertakes an annual review of the adult crossing guard programme to determine which new locations meet the warrants for an adult crossing guard, and 12 locations have been identified as meeting the warrants for the 2014-2015 school year. And whereas any request for additional funding for new locations are brought forward through the annual budget process, but no additional funding was provided for new locations for adult crossing guards that met the warrants for September 2014, with the result that only one of the 12 warranted locations now has an adult crossing guard. And whereas the Public Works Department has indicated that it is already in a deficit position due to winter operations and is not in a position to cover the cost of the additional crossing guards. And whereas at its meeting of July 9th, 2014, City Council directed the mayor and myself to meet with the four chairs and four directors of education together to discuss cost-sharing arrangements on the adult crossing guard programme and other common issues, but this meeting, while scheduled, has not yet taken place. Whereas some of the communities that have warranted locations for adult crossing guards have expressed concerns with the safety of the locations, and whereas the city treasurer has advised that there are sufficient funds in the one-time and unforeseen, excuse me, provision to provide a temporary solution to the community's concerns by funding the $38,500 cost of providing crossing guards at the following 11 warranted locations. I'm not going to read through them, but I'm sure clerk can put that on the screen. And whereas council is aware that any permanent funding for these crossing guards will have to be brought forward to the 2014-2018 city council as part of their annual budget process. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council approve the transfer of $38,500 for the one-time and unforeseen account to the adult crossing guard programme for the purpose of providing an adult crossing guard on a temporary basis at the 11 warranted locations for the remainder of 2014. So, this motion is clearly being brought on the basis of safety and on the basis that we already have these locations warranted, Mr. Mayor. However, it is a stop-gap solution, and we'll move forward with our meeting with the school boards coming up in the next weeks, and we'll deal further with this matter through next term's budget. Thank you.
Just, if I could just, thank you, councillor. Thank you and councillor Clark. I know councillor Wilkinson has worked on this item as well, and councillor Hobbs and Cadri have also brought it to our attention, and I think we should just for the benefit of the residents, list the school areas, which I will do on your behalf. Alorn Cassidy School, Maurice La Pointe, St. Clair School, Rennes de Bois, La Salle, Featherstone Drive Public School, Lakeview Public School, W Erskine Johnson, St. Bridget, Rockcliffe Park, Canadian Montessori Academy, Charles Hulse and Elmdale Public School. So, I thank staff for their cooperation in identifying a revenue stream, but as you pointed out, we have to deal with this basically in the December council, because the money ends technically on December 31st, but it goes over to the new fiscal year. And thank councillor Egli, as Chair of the Transportation Committee, and councillor Wilkinson for originally bringing this forward. And to reiterate, councillor Egli and I now have a meeting at the end of the month with the chairs and directors of education with the school board, because there are a number of other issues that are coming up as a result of changes to the transportation network that is going to have an impact on walkability and walking times and distance to schools. And obviously, children's safety is a paramount concern, but we also think it's a shared responsibility with the school board. So, I thank all who were involved in this work, and as I said, no-one is jumping the queue on this, everyone is meeting the warrants, and these are the ones that will be dealt with. And we believe, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Katalakis, these individuals can be hired relatively quickly and up and running within what timeframe?
That's right, Mr. Mayor. We expect that within the next two weeks, we'll have them up and running.
Okay. So, on the motion, carried. Thank you. Was there a dissent? Nope, okay. Okay. Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notices of motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Aveid de motion pour l'examen à réunion subsistant. Councillor De Rush, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Moffat. Whereas the city of Ottawa prides itself on a large number of parks and green space, whereas the Strand Harry Armstrong Bridge landscaping is complete, and the south-east staging area is located adjacent to Clodagh Cane Park, therefore be it resolved that staff begin the process of officially adding and recognising the landscaped lands as part of Clodagh Cane Park. Thank you.
Okay, so that will be dealt with at our next meeting. Any other notices of motion? Est-ce qu'il y a des autres avis de motion? Nope. Motion to introduce bylaws. Motion important présentation de règlements, conseil Fleury et de Rush, s'il vous plaît.
Que règlement suivant soit lu et adopté, règlement ratifiant les délibérations du compte. So, from the 24th of September 2014, carried.
De ratification. Councillor Fleury.
That the proceedings of City Council meeting of September 2014 be adjourned.
I think we need the confirmation bylaw.
Oh, sorry about that.[1756.22][1756.22](Laughter).
No, we're not going to confirm it.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of City Council meeting of September 2014, September 24, 2014.
All right. Carried, adopté. Inquiries, do we have any written inquiries? Adjournment, councillor Fleury.
That's what happens when I read two documents at the same time. That the following, that the proceeding of the City Council meeting of 24th September 2014 be adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.